Good morning. It is now ten o'clock. I would like to call the Rockdale County Board of Education Public Hearing to Order. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Second.
A motion to approve the agenda as presented has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and second by Ms. Akita Palmer. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? So that's three, five, one. This is the first of three required public hearings providing stakeholders the opportunity to share their opinions on whether to opt out of House Bill 581. Although the official public notice of hearing indicates an intent to opt out, it is important to note that the final decision will be made by the collective action of the Rockdale County Board of Education. A majority vote for the resolution to opt out will result in the board opting out, but a majority vote against it will result in the board remaining in HB 581. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent Kavanaugh overview of HB 581. Dr. Oates, please introduce your cabinet and provide your overview.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. As CFO Joyce Smith takes the podium, I do want to share that pursuant to Board Policy BCBI, we have put in place some special procedures for these hearings in which we've extended the window for public participation and comment from the thirty minutes that Board Policy allows to one hour or until we want to make sure that everyone who has signed up to speak on House Bill 581 gets that opportunity, which is why we extended that time. And that is also the case for the other two hearings that will precede the work session and the regular session. Should all persons who wish to speak who've signed up don't get a chance to do so in that prescribed time before those, the work and regular session, it will roll over to the work and regular session in that public comment period, which we're allowing a full hour or four. So I just want to be clear on those procedures. Please proceed, Madam CFO.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Jackson Lett, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Oates, and community. I'll be talking about House Bill 581. House Bill 581 aims to cap the amount of increase on the assessed value of homestead exempted properties to the rate of inflation. Local governments have until March 1st, 2025 to opt out, should they choose to do so. House Bill 581 provides tax relief for the taxpayer. For example, a homeowner with a home with a 2024 fair market value of $150,000 will see a $6,000 tax exemption and save $120 annually or $10 a month. Under House Bill 581 with these parameters, likewise, a $420,000 house would see an exemption of $16,800 and would have a savings of $336 or $28 a month. Please keep in mind that this does not replace existing exemptions. It is on top of the current $15,000 homestead exemption, which would increase the savings for both homes by $300 in this example. Additionally, the $50,000 senior tax exemption for those sixty-five and older would remain and would be an additional savings of $1,000. Our Tax Commissioner, Tisa Smart Washington, provided this chart that shows the impact of the district's revenues over the next five years. We would incur a total loss of $61.7 million. A loss of this magnitude would be devastating to the financial stability of the district. We also show the one-mill calculation beside the chart that shows what that impact would be for us. And that would make up less than half of that increase. The district's budget has increased year over year as we've seen a huge increase in our employer costs. Due to this and mandated salary increases, the cost of a starting teacher has risen from $63,000 to $85,000, an increase of almost $22,000 in short, four short years. Notice the example of the parapro at the bottom. We pay more in benefits costs for a starting parent than we do their salary. And in 2026, benefit costs will rise again. State and local funds are our major revenue sources and is how we support our day-to-day operations. State funds have supported a smaller percentage each year. Local tax dollars are having to fund a greater portion of our budget. It's gone from 34.3% in 2019 to 48% in 2025. Our local fair share and, excuse me, the amount the state deducts from our QBE formula earnings has increased significantly from $11 million to $22 million since 2018. And equalization, what they, what they add to the formula to reduce financial disparities between districts has seen significant decreases from $12 million to $3 million. Our state revenues are what they are. They apply the same formula to the entire state to calculate our earnings. House Bill 581 was enacted because of hyperinflated home values. But during the Great Recession, we saw negative inflation. The district saw a total of 41.6% decrease in the net tax digest. It was not until 2020 when the tax revenue rebounded to the 2008 values. During the recession, the district also saw austerity cuts from our state revenues. This led to reductions in staff, no salary increases, increased class sizes, furloughs, and removal of the 4% alternative retirement that the district offered its staff. While most districts faced similar cutbacks at this time, being the only district in the metro Atlanta area to opt in, we could be experiencing this alone. Also, unlike many metro schools, Rockdale County Public Schools is nearly 70% residential. This makes us even more reliant on these tax dollars. Opting in could lead to implementing these and other cuts that will, that will result in reduced morale and hinder recruitment of qualified staff, which would ultimately impact students' morale and achievement. Underfunded schools have been linked to impacts on the community to include lower overall prosperity, an increase in crime, and decreased property values.
CFO Smith, if I might interject, I know you're going to go with this slide, but I would say that we would stipulate the remaining slides in the interest of allowing for the public comment. I'm sorry, George. I said that let's stipulate where we can the, the content of the slides so that we can proceed to the public comment, but I do want you to address the slide that you're at right now.
Okay. This had risk, risk of opting in. Opting in locks us into a decision with too many unknowns. How will local vouchers, voucher bills impact us? With local legislation considering reducing the millage rate cap to twenty, how could we generate additional revenue from taxes needed to cover increasing costs? How will we possibly, how will, how will possible cuts or closures at the U.S. Department of Ed and federal push for school choice impact this decision? And lastly, how will we respond to the next recession? Do you want me to go back to that slide?
That's good. Thanks.
That concludes my presentation.
That's it. Thank you, Ms. Smith. The next. We were now recognized visitor who would like to address the board. And we do have visitors and I'm going to read the script. This is the time when we allow citizens three minutes to address the board. Please feel free to submit any documents to the board. We do not normally address your concerns today, but we may ask the administration to address your concerns and provide you with an appropriate response. If your topic involves a personnel matter or an extent you contend to legal rights that have been violated, we have specific grievance procedures for these matters. Speakers should be professional and we respectfully ask that you refrain from using profane or vulgar language. And you should not make threats, slanderous remarks, or engage in behavior that disrupts the decorum of this meeting. By submitting a request to comment card, you acknowledge and agree that you understand and will follow the guidelines for meeting decorum and public participation, which was listed on the comment cards you completed. I would like to welcome Mr. Michael Hutchison.
Thank you for the opportunity to say a few words. I, I'm speaking, I wear many hats in the community, but I'm speaking as a private citizen of Rockdale County. I have a graduate of Heritage High School and I'm grateful that she got a great education attending that school. I'm here to say as a taxpayer, we all know death and taxes are two things that are, we can't get around. I'm here to say as a taxpayer, I'm okay with paying the, the increased amount that is, will happen because of the inflation and property values being increased. I believe it's an investment in our community. Our children are most important and we want to make sure that we have the best schools possible in our community. And so I'm just here to voice my support for opting out. I think that's correct. I talk to people all the time, opting in, opting out. We get confused about what's right. But I think the decision to opt out, I'm in support of that decision because I don't want to handicap our school system one way or the other. You're going to raise the millage rate or do something to cover the differences. Whatever has to be done to cover the budget every year, we understand that. And so I'm here to just to voice my support for the boards to encourage the board to opt out of HB 581. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchison.
Madam Chairwoman, if I might, something Ms. Hudson said, I want to make a point of clarification is, of course, opting out is one option. The other option is to remain in 581, in which case that floating homestead would go into effect. There, there is no requirement under the law to opt in because opting in is the default. The, the, the action would be on opting out. So as Chairwoman Jackson Lette said earlier, when the resolution to opt out is put forth, if a majority of the board supports that resolution to opt out, we would effectively be opted out. If a majority voted no on the resolution to opt out, we would remain in. So, thank you.
Next, we will have Ms. Yvette Clemmons.
Good morning to everyone that's on the board and everyone that's here. I'm here because like he was just saying, to opt in. When I moved from Chicago, Illinois to get a better life for me and my family and my children, the schools and everything is here is wonderful. Then I sit and I look on the news and see how all these homeless peoples downtown Atlanta trying to figure out what happened? How did they end up there? But when you buy a home for $300,000 and you set that rate and you look at your financial or how you working, okay, I can afford this. I can get a better life for me and my family. And then you purchase this and you get here and you do everything the right way. At every six months, your taxes, your taxes, your taxes, study going up, but your pay ain't going up. That's hurting a lot of people that's on fixed incomes. That's hurting a lot of people that's disabled. That's hurting a lot of people who's trying to get a great start. And so I'm here to speak for the people that's here, that's trying, that cannot understand every six months you got two different taxes coming at two different prices. At from, within the last five years, it seemed like now I have two mortgages just simply because of the price of the taxes. I don't know if everyone here living Rockdale, I, I, I don't know. But from where I'm standing from and from where I moved from off of the west side of Chicago, this is what I came for better, not to come here to struggle. So I'm opting in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clemmons. Next, we'll have Ms. Shelby Sanders. Ms. Tina McCray.
Hi, I'm Tina McCray. Good morning, everyone. I have lived in this county my entire life, sixty-plus years. My grandmother moved here in 1903. I'm the only one left. Why? Because of things like this. We just had an example across the street. Up, 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 up. Haven't heard not, very little about cutting in here at all. It's going to affect the children either way. Um, I've done some research on the superintendent's pay, the car he drives. It's all funded by us. I, as the single mother in 2000, I bought a house by myself, on my own. That house payment is almost triple what it was in 2000. And it's a fifty-something-year-old house. It's not, nothing fancy. It's a little brick ranch, but it's what I could afford at the time. But the taxes have just kept going, kept going, kept going. I had two children graduate from here. I have a grandson in middle school. I see a lot of waste in here. I see a lot of waste in the schools. I do not understand for the life of me why we've got, at the middle school, we've got a principal, we've got an assistant principal, we've got a sixth grade principal, we've got a seventh grade principal, we've got an eighth grade principal. When I went to school eons ago, we had a principal and maybe an assistant principal. There's cuts that could be made. Either way, it's going to affect these children. And this place should be for the children. If our taxes keep going up, a lot of families are going to lose their homes. Where's the children going? They're going to be homeless. That's where they're going to be. If y'all are saying all these cuts are going to have to happen, the children are going to suffer. But the main thing is the taxpayers are going to suffer. When it gets to where you have to, elderly people have to decide whether they can pay their taxes or they can eat. Something's wrong. Something is desperately wrong. We are not Alpharetta. We are not John's Creek. We're not Gwinnett County. Why do people make the amount of money that they make here? The schools used to be great. They used to be great. They're not that way no more. You got children afraid to go to the bathroom, afraid they're going to get jumped. You got disrespectful children interrupting the class. That's where you need to focus, not on raising taxes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. McCray. Now we'll have Ms. Delisha Ross.
Hope y'all are well this morning. I am in my thirties. I just moved back to Georgia. I'm actually from Rockdale. I actually was born here, but I was raised in DeKalb. Um, just to give background. When I went to school here, it was amazing. I had, they offered things in like the elementary schools that they didn't offer in DeKalb County. They no longer offer that here. So my kids didn't get the same experience I got when I came here. The other issue that I have is that when I purchased my home when I came back in 2022, I had this expectation that Rockdale was going to be elite. What I was used to when I looked from DeKalb County back to Rockdale, I was like, oh my God, Rockdale is like the best school that I went to and I want to go back there. But they're not getting that. My son was at Davis Middle School getting jumped every other week. I had to pull him out and put him in private school. That's not okay. That's not what I expected him to experience at this age coming back to Georgia when I had this high expectation. Then I bought my home at $389 for the price. The neighborhood, the homes went up higher, so my taxes went up higher than that year. As to be expected, that's what happens. You, you can't expect less. However, the other homes that were already there, their, their taxes did not go up. I'm still fighting that. I'm still fighting that the taxes for my home went to five, my pricing value was at 589. But the home right next to me was still at three. I'm paying more, but I'm not seeing my community pay the same amount. Now that that has happened, I'm still fighting something from two, almost two years ago. It's ridiculous. It should not have happened this way. And so I'm not for going up. I have kids in this county and I have a high hope for the kids at these schools. But when I'm seeing the money go, and no offense, Mr. Oates, go to buying a vehicle or building stuff that doesn't need to happen, we need the parapros. The teachers are struggling. That's the reason we're seeing behavior issues because we don't have enough teachers to actually help them. We need the people and the staff inside of the schools to get the help. We need the people and the staff to feel they are supported by you all, actually hearing their concerns. And if I'm going to spend that money, I want to see that growth. Otherwise, I could leave. I make enough. And people that are like me that make enough will leave the county. You will lose money. So you're either going to lose the money from the people not being able to spend the money or the people that got the money and don't want to be here. So that's all I have to say about it and hopefully you guys take that into consideration. Y'all have a blessed day.
Ms. Ross, now we will have from Ms. Anita Christian.
Good morning. I'm asking this entire board to not opt out of HB 581. The county overwhelmingly voted for it and I think we should stay in. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Christian. Now we will hear from Paul Cantrell Senior.
Good morning. Uh, my taxes went up. I was paying a triple. My taxes tripled. And uh, that is why I am here today because my taxes tripled. And uh, I was paying eight hundred and eight hundred and five thousand, eight hundred and five dollars. Uh, and it went up to 2,173. And uh, I was, wanted to explain the, the, the thing that I got from the uh, property taxes was that, that uh, I was uh, was, I was pleased with the thing that they sent me. But uh, when I got my regular taxes, I uh, was not pleased with the uh, things that they had sent me. And uh, so I uh, I could not react to the uh, the thing that they had sent me because they had sent me another one for $2,173. And uh, I, I would just thank the Lord that uh, it was not as mu- much as that uh, it had been. So uh, I was just wanting to say uh, that, that my taxes also went up also.
Stay in, to be in. You wanted to stay in. You wanted to opt in.
Opt in, yeah.
I'd like to say we had a son that graduated from Rockdale also and over the years, he graduated in twenty, two thousand, twenty, 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 twenty. And uh, we've known this with other parents too, that it's also the taxes have gone up, you know, and I just pray that you all will consider necessary. And I'm Ingrid. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fran. Now we're here from Mr. Ron Moore. Now we're here from Ms. Ingrid Cantrell. Okay. Now, Mr. Warren Potter.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I didn't plan on talking this morning, but I guess I filled out the card and you get called up. I found that out after the fact. But anyway, I just wanted to say that we're all here, all of us here and all of y'all I know are here to do what's best for the children in, in our own thinking and in our own experiences. But uh, you know, I do want to tell you something that we can do to maybe accomplish that. I'm a church, I'm a minister at a local church and we want to have, build a bigger fellowship hall. Well, of course, that's the same thing we're talking about here. It takes money, doesn't it? And we don't have enough at this moment to do it. So as an individual, I decided to take a pay cut. And I'm not saying, I'm not pointing out anybody here or anybody anywhere, but what I'm saying is that sometimes as an individual, if we want something done, we need to be the leader in it. And we need to lead in a way that shows what our interests are. And so with that said, I think that all of us should be able to work together, no matter which side you're on, and figure out what the best thing to do is. Because there are, I don't think anybody here can honestly say that there aren't places that where we can, we, we cannot cut. Because there are places we can cut. I helped the, the school that my boys go to and I help them however I can and whenever I can. But you know, maybe that is a part of the answer too, to get some more volunteers. And I know that I had to go through, in fact, y'all, I don't know who, who initiated it. But now on the field trips, we have to have background check. That's a new thing. I don't know if that, if y'all, y'all know about that, I'm sure. But that's something that we have to pay as an individual again too. And so I'm willing to pay that to continue to go on the field trip with my boys. So I think that we can work together, all of us, no matter which, like I said, which side we're coming from. But we need to be cognizant of the fact that, you know, when she pointed out, the, the lady at first pointed out all those figures, I could see right off where a lot of people would love to be a teacher at that pay. And I'm not saying anything negative toward teachers because I love all my teachers. Yet, you know, we have to be realistic. What is the private sector doing and what, what are we doing as a school board or as a school system? And so Rockdale, I'm glad to hear everybody's praise for it in the past and I think we can continue to be the best school system in the state, but we have to be realistic of how to do that. We can be a leader instead of a follower by following these for the, this uh, um, financial guidelines that the state had give us, given us and show other counties how to do it within the parameters that helps all the residents also. Thank you for your time.
Good morning. I just want to say that I was born and raised in Rockdale County. I've been here eighty-four years. My husband is eighty-nine and disabled. And we have seen our taxes triple. We cannot keep paying it. I drive a twenty-five-year-old car and we can't get a decent car. So I just think there's something that you all could do to keep us in and not raise our taxes anymore. Thank you.
Ms. Reagan. Now we're here from Mr. Michael Joyce.
Good morning. My time is limited, so I'll get to the chase. I stand before you today in my capacity as a ten-year resident of this county, but also as a retired teacher, twenty years' experience servicing disadvantaged students, sixteen years in the Bronx and two years at Newton High School, Row Rams, two years at Edwards Middle School. I can't hide my patriot pride. My service as, as a teacher has always been in demand, not just because I took time to constantly improve my craft, but also because in short, I was the first one in the door, the last one to leave. My wife can tell you. Uh, but more importantly, I took the time to visit the homes of many of my students. Not just to complain, but to offer my service to teach them in their home so that when they come to my classroom, they, they couldn't mess up because I would go to their home to teach them at my expense. Because I would go to their home to teach them at my expense. I was a two-time recipient of the Teacher of the Year Award. Here's one of them. You can see it at the end. At the middle school in the Bronx, I succeeded in, in bringing upwards of eighty percent of my middle school students graduated with high school credit. My top class, not all my students, just my top class. In addition, I was the union chapter leader in the Bronx where I brought the concerns of my teachers to the administration. I say all of that to say that I understand the perspectives of both the teachers, the students, and the administration. The administration loved me because I got along with them and I got along with the teachers. So the question is, how do you attract teachers like Mr. Joyce in your school? And on the top of the list is money, but I wanted to say to you, money is not the only issue. Looking at the data, the time is running out. Looking at the data, the school has improved in their performance in terms of graduation. But when I look at the data more closely, I see, for example, Rockdale County High School, seven percent match proficiency, thirty-seven percent reading proficiency, thirty percent in science, but eighty-two percent graduating with those statistics. Bottom line, you cannot put all the weight on one
Time is up, sir.
of the system and
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
To succeed.
Thank you, sir.
That's what you're doing.
Time is up.
Thank you, Mr. Joyce.
To the, to the community.
Next, we're here from Ms. Donna Hewitt. Next, we're here from Mr. Stephen Henry.
Good morning, Rockdale Board.
Good morning.
I'm the one that got infamously thrown out of the last meeting. Listen, I came from New York, moved down here, moved my daughter down here in two thousand five, bought her a house in Newton. Back then, the scores were ninety-three percent, high eighties, ninety-four percent in the school systems. I moved down here in two thousand six, bought a home here in Rockdale. Same thing, ninety-three percent, eighty, high eighties, whatever, depending on the school. I have never had any children at all. My wife and I have never had any children in the school system. So my thing as a senior, sixty-six years old, my wife is sixty-seven. Our taxes municipally have gone up two hundred and thirteen percent since twenty nineteen. And for the school board, it's gone up fifty percent since twenty nineteen. I think that at seventy-five hundred dollars a year, it's unsustainable when you have an increase in twenty twenty-three of thirty-six percent on taxes and twenty twenty-four of twenty-five percent. Another increase, I believe, in twenty twenty-one of seven and a half percent compounded, we're talking about eighty-seven and a half percent increases in taxes. So somebody made a comment which set me off at that last meeting about talking about saving thirty dollars. This is more than saving thirty dollars. When your taxes go up eighty-eight percent, that's almost double. And there has to be other ways to fund this. There has to be some belt tightening, some fat trimming. And also too, as Michael Joyce, my neighbor, dear neighbor and friend, the schools are failing. They plateaued, if my sources are correct, around twenty twenty, it plateaued at a thirty percentile, and it's been flatlined ever since. So we have this oblique relationship where the performance is flatlined, but the taxes are going like this. That shouldn't be. So my thing is, you need to do something for seniors, particularly for the disabled. And you need to improve the school system, and you need to do it not just with money. Parents have to be engaged too. That's a part of it. Students have to be impressed upon that learning is important. But, you know, just throwing money at it and saying, well, we don't want to opt in because, you know, it's going to limit us and so on and so forth. I don't think that's the right approach, and that's just my two cents on it. Thank you.
Henry, now we will hear from Ms. Alma Crumbey.
Well, I'm just here today to let everybody know that I'm opting in. I am a senior. I have a disabled husband, been here since nineteen seventy-six. My taxes this year doubled than what it was last year. And being, living on social security, we're not going to make it. You know, we got to have something to help us out. And like I said, I'm not a speaker, but I'm opting in.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Alma Crumbey. Now we will hear from Ms. Sandra Skibek.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I spoke at the last Board of Education meeting and stumbled through that. I'll probably stumble through this one as well. I have my talking points. I've been praying that we have two-way listening. I want to understand people that are wanting to opt out, and I want to stay in. Here's what I understand now, and I'd like to be corrected if I have a misunderstanding. The citizens of Rockdale County voted for tax relief. They voted for HB 581. The Board of Commissioners, as I understand it, have opted in. The city of Conyers has opted in. So the only body that is looking at opting out is the Board of Education. And I'm grateful for the presentation that was made earlier because I did see that at an earlier meeting. What I did not see, you know, we saw the projection on how much revenue you're going to lose. But how much revenue are you going to gain with all the new construction I see going on? How much revenue are you projected to gain from commercial properties, which includes rental properties? Where I do see a potential loss in revenue is with the new voucher program. Because as I understand it, we have five failing schools. I'd like to see, what are we going to do about those five failing schools? Although I do question how many parents within those districts are going to really have the option of sending their children to another school, even with those vouchers? So here's my suggestion. Don't ignore the majority of the citizens that voted for HB 581. That's what we expect. We expect tax relief. Instead, look at your budget. Look at it item by item. If it does not help with the fundamentals of education, eliminate it. If it's a luxury item, eliminate it. By doing this, you can reduce your budget and allow those of us that are struggling to stay in our homes of, in my case, thirty-five years. I'm losing track now. The bottom line is, I'd like to see a focus to make sure every student
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
that they can without
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sandra Skibek. Next, we will have Ms. Susan Paul Smith.
Good morning. I've been a homeowner and a taxpayer in Rockdale County for thirty-five years. I'm a parent of two children who graduated from the school system and who were able to attend the college of their choice because of the excellent education they received here. I am a retiree of the school system, having served in a leadership capacity for eighteen years and helped guide the school system through some of its most difficult times. I have been a parent volunteer and a community volunteer, always trying to improve the quality of life for the people in my community. And I have served for more than thirty years as an advocate for public education. I believe it is incumbent upon all of us to ensure that we do all we can to provide the best possible education for all the children in our community. With my unique perspective and understanding, I urge you as duly elected members of the Board of Education to opt out of House Bill 581. I understand that you desire to ease the tax burden for homeowners in our community, again of which I am one. However, I do not believe that House Bill 581 is the answer. There are still too many questions regarding the long-term ramifications of House Bill 581, particularly its impact on the school system's M and O budget. We have all seen time and time again how well-intended legislation can have unintended negative consequences. With House Bill 581, your decision is a permanent change to the school system's primary funding source for its maintenance and operations budget. You effectively cut the funding source. You tie the hands of future boards. That doesn't sound like prudent business to me. There will be consequences, and I fear that you may ultimately, ultimately end up harming those very people that you attempt to help. If you want a school system that can be responsive to the changing needs of students and staff, you will opt out of House Bill 581. If you want a school system that attracts the best and brightest of teachers, you will opt out of House Bill 581. If you want a school system that can bring more opportunities and innovative programs to students, you will opt out of House Bill 581. As a member of the Board of Education, one of your duties is financial oversight of the district. That means you approve the budget. Whatever has been set forth for the year must have your final approval. In reality, is it really being fiscally responsible to cut the primary funding source for that budget when our students and families require even more from us? With so many unanswered questions, I urge you to opt out of House Bill 581. Thank you.
Next, we're here from Mr. Matthew Sevold.
Um, so I actually moved to Rockdale because I got a job here with R C P S. I taught math for six years before going back into the construction industry. And I understand the problems in the school systems. I saw it from a lot of different angles. They're multifaceted, they're complex. We want real easy solutions. We want to say, well, this is the answer, this is the problem, and it's never that cut and dry. With that said, I also saw there was legitimately a lot of air, I don't want to say a lot, there was a significant amount of waste and things that could have been trimmed from the budget that were not benefiting students. I think if we could have R C P S employees come and speak freely without, you know, they oftentimes don't feel like they can speak freely, that they could point out specifically, and I can think of numerous ones off the top of my head. I have a genuine question, and I don't expect you guys to answer. But my taxes went from the, two years ago, our taxes were, I want to say twenty-seven, twenty-eight hundred dollars. This year, we paid five thousand two hundred dollars in taxes. Our mortgage went up now almost seven hundred dollars a month. Like, we're literally looking at leaving the county because taxes have gone up so much. I don't know where the money's going. Like, if I, if, to me, in my mind, if the taxes went up almost double, then I would think you guys should be getting almost double the money that you got the previous year. And if not, where's the money going? I'm from, I'm from North Georgia. I have family that's still there who, their homes are valued, some of them at six hundred thousand dollars, and they're paying fifteen hundred dollars a year in taxes. Our home is valued just shy of four hundred thousand, and we pay five thousand two hundred dollars. Like, and I just, it makes me want to go back where I live. My children go to Lorraine Elementary. I think it's a great school. My children are multiracial. I like the fact that we live in a county where they see people that look like them. I don't want to move to an area where I feel like it's, one, basically where I'm from, it's ninety-nine percent white. So I like the fact that my children are growing up in this community. And we want to stay here, but people are hurting. Like, seven hundred dollars a month is hurting us, and it's hurting a lot of other people. And a lot of people don't even realize how much their taxes have gone up. Because I've asked them, and, you know, they just, you know, some of them are like, oh, yeah, my mortgage just went up. A lot more people are going to realize as the mortgage company sends out notices. And time is up, so.
Thank you, Mr. Sevold. Next, we have Mr. Bob Nesbit.
Good morning. Good morning to the chair. Good morning to members of the board. Good morning to the superintendent. Morning to your staff and those who are in attendance. The first thing I'd like to say is that we have to be intellectually honest about what's going on here. 581 is not about reducing taxes. 581 is about capping the homestead exemption and the property assessed value based upon the CPI, which is this Consumer Price Index. That's what it's about. Now, if we really look at it, let's break it down. There are three components to our property taxes. You have the assessed value of your property, you have the millage rate, and then you have the actual tax. And you get the tax based upon the millage rate multiplied times the assessed value of your property. Now, if we go ahead and we put in 581, it's going to take the assessed value and say it cannot increase in any given year more than the rate of inflation or the CPI. So the only thing that the board has, if they want to increase or decrease property taxes, is to either increase or decrease the millage rate. I mean, the millage rate, which is one option. But if you keep it as it is, you have two options. What are those two options? Because even if the assessed value goes up, right now, if we stay as we are, all the board has to do, if you want to decrease the taxes for these people, is reduce the millage rate. You don't have to do anything with the assessed value. I don't care if my property is assessed at a million dollars. If I want my taxes to stay exactly the same as it is, I just adjust the millage rate. But now, we're going to lock ourselves in to 581, where it's going to cap it, and we are decreasing our options. So if we are intellectually honest and we really want to be astute financialists, then what we're going to do is to say, let's keep ourselves with two options. So no matter what the assessed value is, we can adjust and determine our taxes based upon the millage rate. The millage rate is one one-thousandth of a point. So if you take a dollar, a millage rate is a thousand, you take a thousand millage points to get one dollar. So all we have to do is to say, look, let's look at what our millage rate is, look at the assessed value, and adjust the millage rate to reach the amount of taxes we want to have. You can give them a tax relief without locking into 581. 581 is a misnomer. It's a trick. And what we're talking about here is I see seniors coming up here. I'm sixty-nine years old. I see seniors coming up here saying they need a relief. I want a relief too. But you know what? You took an oath on this board. You took an oath before man and God to do what's best for the school system and our kids. You didn't take an oath to these seniors. That's not your oath. When you took an obligation to get on this board, you said, I'm going to do what's right by these kids.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up, sir.
Not what's right by the seniors.
Thank you, Mr. Nesbit. Next, we'll have Mr. George Kellecheck.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, board, citizens, students of Rockdale County, George Kellecheck, I, the Taxpayer Association, speaking in regards to our membership. In front of your package, if you would open it, you will see the annual spending from 2010 to 2024. This silo, which I talk about many times, versus the county and the city. This silo, which I talk about many times, versus the county and the city, your budget has increased ninety million dollars in fourteen years. From twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-four, fifty-eight million dollars of the ninety million. That's a sixty-four percent increase just in a six-year period. This is an unsustainable plan, not only for Rockdale County, but all taxpayers. You're making a decision, along with the county and the city, that will affect nineteen thousand one hundred and seven homesteaders in this county. This information was put together from open records requests that were provided by the Rockdale County School System employees. In twenty nineteen to twenty twenty, your employee count went up seven hundred and twenty. I don't know why. While your students decreased one thousand one hundred and ten, your cost per student has increased by four thousand three hundred and fifty-eight dollars per student, but your student count has gone down one thousand one hundred and ten. I'm glad to see that we have a county commissioner here today, because unless you're disabled or a disabled vet, you're going to pay two taxes in this county. If you live also in the city of Conyers, your taxes have gone up one hundred and eighty-seven percent in the last six years. Social Security has gone up twenty-three percent. This county is aging, just like the state of Georgia. So as we look at this, let us say, Superintendent, I'll ask you not to charge me five hundred and thirteen dollars so we can see what the school system looks like over the last ten years regarding administrative increases versus teachers. Administrators do not teach. Teachers teach. Yes, there has to be a shift. Have we looked at HB five thirty-eight? What's going on with literacy? According to the Governor's Office of Budget and Planning, which is going on right now, did you know the state legislatures are looking at changing the Q E D funding system for the state to fund these school systems? I'll be back this afternoon. Thank you.
I have Mr. Eric Lee.
My name is Eric Lee. I pastor the one hundred and forty-five-year-old Springfield Baptist Church in Conyers, Georgia. As the pastor of that church for twenty-five years and a resident of, a homeowner in Rockdale County for twenty-five years, I'm sympathetic to the neighbors who have shared their financial hardships. I do believe, however, that this support for House Bill five eighty-one is driven by both fear and anger. However, when decisions are driven by fear and anger, we make mistakes. One of the things that we've learned in this presentation today, if we were listening, are the variables and the uncertainty that come with House Bill five eighty-one. The people who have spoken out against five eighty, who have spoken out against opting in, who have spoken out against opting in, are people, are the people who want us to remain in five eighty-one, have not, I think, appreciated the fact that these variables might end up costing us more. House Bill five eighty-one may not be the solution that you want it to be. Perhaps it is the punishment you want to unleash on the school system. We are marching toward underfunded schools. That is the death march of this county, underfunded schools. It is incoherent to talk about failing schools and decreasing funding to those schools at the same time. The difference between now and thirty years ago, because we had failing schools thirty years ago, is that when the schools failed thirty years ago, it wasn't just a blame game, not just the board's fault or the teacher's fault, it was everybody's fault, and everybody needed to do something. I don't come up here talking about your students and your schools and your budgets because they used to be our students, they used to be our schools, they used to be our budgets. I stand with Michael Hutchison and members of this board who want us to opt out of House Bill five eighty-one for the benefit of taxpayers and the benefit of students. Thank you.
I would have Ms. V Russo.
Morning. I wasn't going to speak this morning, but I've been listening very carefully what everybody has been saying. Something that has not been pointed out yet is, we are in the month of February. I deal with a lot of real estate. One statement I made to all the builders who wanted to come and build here, I made a statement, how are you going to move these homes in Rockdale County because the taxes are so high? We have five hundred and fifteen thousand people who moved away from the state of Florida because of these problems that they were having in there. I personally know a lot of people from South Florida. If, now, these people from South Florida, they are not coming to the, to our county here in Rockdale, they are going every place else. And the reason is, they all say the same thing, we will not be paying the taxes in Rockdale County. We are going to go to counties, especially older people, they are targeting counties where they don't have to pay school tax at the age of eighty, because it doesn't make any sense. Now, to prove my point, I do a lot in real estate. I used to invest in real estate. I can live here, but do I want to live here? Well, we'll see what you're going to decide. Look what's happening in February here in Rockdale County. Usually, in Rockdale County, at this time of the year, you should have about two hundred houses up for sale. The news is, you have seven hundred nineteen houses up for sale. Everybody is thinking about moving out, and I am one of them. I've told all my friends that I am not going to be a sitting duck here in Rockdale County and support failing schools. I'm not going to do it. Yes, I can afford to stay here. That's not the problem, but I'm not going to stay here if you're going to opt out of five eighty-one. Now, when it comes to the school board and the county, we need to get businesses in this county ASAP. I'm willing to do and bring businesses from overseas to Rockdale County. Give me the opportunity. We need to get quick money in here, and this is not even about the kids, this is about the parents. What are you going to do with the kids if the, if the parents are going to lose their homes? They're all going to be on the streets. We cannot afford to talk about the kids. Everybody and their mother knows that kids are important to all of us, but if you force us to move out of this county because of your high taxes, you know, you're going to see a bunch of kids on the streets, and all the crime rate is going to go up. Right now, we have thousands of homes up here in Rockdale County sitting empty. What do you think is going to happen to those homes? Nobody's going to be coming and moving in here. We are going to be so crime investigative that there is no end to it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Russo. I think that's the end of public speaking. Do I hear a motion to conclude the meeting? Second, Akeeta. A motion to conclude the meeting has been made by Ms. Heather Duncan and second by Ms. Akeeta Palmer. The meeting is concluded at eleven o'clock. Any discussion? All in favor? Unopposed. This concludes our meeting.